Oh, yeah.
Mayor Maglio.
I am here.
Trustee Berkshire.
Yeah.
Trustee Debit.
Here.
Trustee Domkey.
I'm here.
Trustee Polaski.
Here.
And trustee Trejo.
Here.
Hey, we should do the pledge allegiance to go stand behind me is the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
That's a little bit of a challenge.
Yeah, I love watching Zoom try to keep up with everybody.
Okay, so Village, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Village Board is being being done virtually and will be video recorded and audio recorded. Please, if they want to submit your comments to the Village Board to contact the Village Board either by email, voicemail, or telephone. And we do have some public me, public comments that need to be read if Patty, if you would like to do so.
Okay, our first one is from Carl Robertson. And he, his agenda item is give masks away. Schaumburg gave masks to all residents who wanted them. Can the village of Roselle do that? He included his address, no email and no phone number. Second.
Real quick, has anybody called in for mask? Not to sidetrack this, but as the village have any requests come in? Anyone?
Jeff?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, we've.
Not that I'm aware of either. Marcus said nothing to me. Anybody has said nothing to me, so.
Okay. Sorry Patty.
Our second comment comes from Barbara Hockstead. And she states, many years ago, the village hired a community relations coordinator and invested in an email system that connects thousands of residents to ongoing opportunities in the village, including all job postings and needs within the community. It is a huge mistake for the village not to announce via email that a trustee resigned from the village board as step one. The outgoing public servant should be thanked for their contributions and the process of replacing that leader should be made public in advance of any vote or appointment. Replacing a village trustee should be as public and transparent a process as possible with an application form that the mayor reviews to help our village cast a wide net and seat the very best, most highly qualified replacement candidate. I urge all trustees to vote no on any replacement candidate and delay any appointment until step one of this process can be taken. Please utilize the cost effective and efficient communication tools we have all, we all have invested in and come to rely on for important news and information.
Okay.
Okay, and the third one just came in this afternoon. It is from, from Dr. Langner. It's one of our business owners here on Main Street. And it's a voicemail. Hi, this is Dr. Langner calling from Langner Eye Care. I'm leaving a public comment for the village board meeting tonight. My husband and I are very disappointed that Roselle is choosing to give in to all this COVID hype and cancel everything and not let businesses open. We are very discouraged and irritated and sad that you are drinking the Kool-Aid here and giving in to all this garbage and canceling everything. It is a shame and we are very sad. Come the day that we leave Roselle, and it is coming soon, we will leave happily because this is a mess. So I just want to register our dissatisfaction with what is going on. I'm sure the liberals will have a good quote-on-quote reason. As in, reason, we'll have a good reason. It's not good enough for us and we are going to be out of here as soon as possible.
Okay.
And that's it.
Thank everybody for their comments. You know, Jim, can I, just for the record, the legislation on the appointment for a trustee, if you could reply to that?
Sure. The appointment of a trustee upon an office vacancy is controlled by 65 ILCS five slash three point one dash ten dash fifty, small letter E. And basically what it says is the mayor has 60 days to appoint after the person has left office. It specifies nothing other than that in terms of things like transparency, participation, and the like. It pretty much places the discretion for the appointment in the hands of the mayor. And ultimately, if you read that full section, it's the control of that appointment in the mayor. The reason for that is is that they make a nomination for a mayor. They actually appoint under the statute. It's not even a nomination. Then the board has to decide whether they will agree with the appointment by advice and consent. If the board rejects the advice and consent and does not accept the candidate, then the mayor goes to the same process with a second candidate, except there's not an additional 60 days attached to that, in my opinion. The mayor can, if the mayor elects, do it on the same night that it, he for the appointment of the first candidate. Same process follows again. If the second candidate is not approved by advice and consent, then what happens is the mayor appoints one of the two candidates to serve in the position until there's an election or until there is advice and consent. Hypothetically, that could be another candidate. Hypothetically, it could be the person that serves on the board. There's no time set under statute for that advice and consent to occur, which is why I say that ultimately, the legislature has decided that this process is one where the mayor has the primary authority and control and does not require what I characterize as a participatory process. Could it involve one? The answer to that is yes, it could. You know, but in this particular circumstance, I think with COVID and the like, our timing with regard to a variety of things has been thrown off what it might typically be because of all the other issues that. So what I'm really trying to say is what the mayor's procedure is in this case, it's fully compliant with state statute, whether we agree with the state statute or not in the way that establishes that process.
Okay, and then just, just for the record, I'd also like to add for public record is that I did have five candidates that had contacted us. I had four of them send in a resume. Those resumes were shared with the village board. Village Board was asked for their opinions on those candidates and according to those opinions is how the appointment is being made tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question on the third public comment. If this is not the appropriate time or is the appropriate time?
You hear it?
So I guess.
We'll hear it.
All right, so the first question is, is it, what are we going to do in terms of response? Because it's not the village of Roselle that is causing the situation. So I think we need to get that clarified. And then secondly, this is more an observation is it sounds as if they've already made up their mind and they're just simply using this as a recourse of why they want to move out of Roselle because we're not prohibiting them. It's the state of Illinois that is doing this too. So if they have any concerns and questions, I guess they should bring it up to them.
And I would like to be kind and I'm sure it's out of frustration like a lot of us are. So.
So I think we should provide that clarity.
Yeah, well, thank, thank you. Yes, Wayne.
You know, they were going to move out anyway. I believe what Bruce is saying is true. They're just latching on one event to another.
True, they are.
I would have is, and maybe this is a lawyer's question, is where are they going to go? They're going to stay in Illinois. If they stay in Illinois, they're going to be subject to the same rules that have been imposed by Governor Pritzker on all of the municipalities of this state. Roselle is only following what it has to follow and is obligated to follow under the law. And there's no community in Illinois that has the legal right, as determined by courts at this point, to do the contrary. There's two pieces of litigation that are pending in the state right now challenging those declarations. And when we get a ruling from the court, we'll know whether those people are right or wrong. I can tell you right now that there's case law out there that deals with epidemics and pandemics, which would support the proposition that the governor's declarations, at least in, are valid. And it's, you know, not up to individual municipalities to determine the contrary at this point, that they don't have legal authority, in my opinion, to do it. As a non-home rule, that's clear, but this, this applies statewide. And there's an awful lot of controversy about it and I do understand the frustration, but from a legal standpoint, the village is in a position where compliance is in the absence of a court order to the contrary, something that I don't think that we can avoid.
Which is where my suggestion of providing them at least that clarity and understanding, because they seem to believe that it is something that the village of Roselle has some level of control.
And unfortunately, it's wrong because if flattening the curve, you know, applied to each individual community as it's been described. And again, whether you agree with it or you disagree with it, you can't flatten the curve in one community and not flatten the curve in another community because we live closely together and there's migration between those areas and contacts among people. People don't stop moving at the end of corporate border.
I will try and make that phone call and make sure we clarify that. Okay, I need a motion to accept this evening's presented agenda.
A moot.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, moving on to official and staff report. I'm up first. I'd like to ask for a motion to appoint Barbara Sernow as trustee to fill the vacancy caused by the resignation of Heather Fransky.
So moot.
Second.
Patty, can I have a voice vote, please?
Will we, Gus, can we have some discussion? Or can we make a statement before we vote? Or can I vote first?
No, you can make a statement, Wayne, go ahead.
Well, it's predicated on my vote. Should I wait till it's my call to vote?
No, go ahead for discussion.
Okay, I just wanted to make this statement. And I, and I printed it out, so I want to be concise. For all our prior board meetings, our voting proceeds with the full detailed report by staff. So we are informed on the issues and details on which we will vote. In the case of this appointment, without a resume or even a letter of interest, I, as trustee, cannot vote yes in good conscience. Therefore, I will vote no and recommend we postpone the appointment until such a time as we have more information. Now, I guess the time limit won't allow us to do that. But this is in no way a reflection on the recommended candidate. I want to be concise about that. I just think that we should have given, gotten more information on the candidate. And that's basically what I'm saying. Thank you.
Okay.
Wayne, will you send that to me, please?
I'd be happy to, Patty. What font?
Just send it to me so I can include it in the minute.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion then?
Can I just say a quick thing?
Sure.
So I do agree that it would, in the ideal situation, we would have cast a wider net, maybe to a public, you know, website, e-news, everything like that. I get that it's in the mayor's discretion to pick, you know, who he feels is best. I will support Barbara's nomination. After talking to the mayor, it seems that, you know, she has a lot of experience being a HOA board member, president, a long time resident, and it's also nice to get representation from Cook County. But in the future, if this does happen again, I strongly encourage a more public process of selection.
Okay. Anybody else? Roll call, Patty.
Trustee Debit.
Aye.
Trustee Berkshire.
Yes.
Trustee Polaski.
Aye.
Trustee Trejo.
Aye.
Trustee Domkey.
Oh.
And I will proceed with the recommendation from the board. I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt a resolution extending the declaration of the local state of emergency approved by the village board on April 13th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Trustee Donkey.
Yes.
Trustee Debit.
Aye.
Trustee Polaski.
Aye.
Trustee Berkshire.
Yes.
And trustee Trejo.
Aye.
And the motion is carried. I'd like to ask for a motion to pass an ordinance ratifying the adoption of action by a mayoral executive order during the declaration of local state of emergency.
A moot.
Second.
Okay. Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Debit.
Aye.
Trustee Trejo.
Aye.
Trustee Domkey.
Aye.
Trustee Berkshire.
Yes.
Trustee Polaski.
Hi, sorry, I don't know if that went through.
Pardon me?
Aye, did that go through?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. And that is all I have. Moving along, any trustees have a report to give this evening? Village Board? Village Administrator?
Just briefly, per my conversation with Mayor Maglio and all the trustees last week, I would like to confirm our next village board meeting is Tuesday, May 26th at 5:30, which will be virtual also.
That's good.
Any objections?
No.
Okay, Jeff, we have to go for that.
Thank you.
All righty. Village Attorney.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Amber Laison.
Evening, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the Roselle Chamber of Commerce, all activities have been canceled. We do have the multi-chambered tables of interest, which is a virtual meeting that the Addison, Bartlett, Carol Stream, Geneva, and Bloomingdale chambers are teaming up with Roselle. This is going to happen by WebEx on Wednesday, May 27th. And the topic is social media tricks and tips. It is a $10 fee and it starts at 11:30 and goes till 12:50. In addition, the annual golf has been postponed. We're looking at Wednesday, August 26th as the new date. And that's pending everything that's going on. That's all on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce.
Will there be a website location for that community virtual meeting?
It is on the, the chamber website right now with all the details and the ability to, to pay and, and what's involved with that. They have, it's like every half hour or so often, there's different rounds.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, non-controversial in nature and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no discussion on these items. Can I have our attorney give us a breakdown of the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The consent agenda tonight includes presentation and approval of the village board minutes of April 13th, 2020, the adoption of a resolution for repairs to the Devlin wastewater treatment plant digester blower in the amount of $11,543.45. The approval of the second payment for the Devlin influent pump-in screening project in the amount of $859,501.92. The approval of the third partial payment for the Devlin influent pump-in screening project in the amount of $429,341.79. The approval of the fourth partial payment for the Devlin influent pump-in screen improvements project in the amount of $464,107.9. And the approval of final payment for the Kennedy lift station replacement project in the amount of $13,180. And that is the consent agenda for tonight, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion to accept the consent agenda.
A moot.
A second.
Okay, Madam Clark, I have a roll call, please.
Trustee Debit.
Aye.
Trustee Domkey.
Aye.
Trustee Polaski.
Aye.
Trustee Trejo.
Aye.
Trustee Berkshire.
Yes.
And the motion is passed. Okay, moving on to our regular agenda on our community development. Trustee Polaski.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution amending the licensing agreement approved by Resolution 2013-1662 for 107 Main Street.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, do, since this is being recorded and people are likely to listen in on this, do we want to give a little explanation to these items so that it's kind of clear?
Ah, yes, if we. Yeah, we can. It's on, it's on the agenda.
I just think that some people might be watching and it's like, well, what's that to have to do? It's a call.
Would you like to take that for us?
Sure. This was just a situation where the previous owner, Sean Lee, sold the business but still owns the building. And because of that, we're required to amend the license agreement to reflect new ownership. No other, no other provisions of the agreement change.
Okay, and then agreement is for use of the.
A portion of the town center plaza that the village owns.
Okay. Mr. Donkey?
Just ask to refer back to the original document. Did we have any term limit on it or did we leave it open with an escape clause? Or how was that structured in case they didn't do something that we were, were in agreement with?
There's a termination without cause provision in it, which pretty, you have complete control of the situation. Do not like it.
And it's better to have open-ended than on the term limit, right?
I think in this particular case, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Anything else tonight under community development?
That's it for community development.
All righty. Mr. Donkey, can I ask you to take fire for me, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd be happy to do that. Um. My glasses, I guess. Wait a minute, let me get rid of those rings. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a donation from Country Financial in the amount of $750 for the fire department and $750 for the police department.
Second.
Any discussion? Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Anybody opposed? Okay, and the motion is carried.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to also make a motion to adopt the resolution approving a billing agreement between Pan Paramedic Billing Services Incorporated, that's PBS, and the village of Roselle.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Donkey. We have nothing under police. You kind of handled it there. Mr. Brookshire, under Public Works, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the approval of a payment to Chicago Testing Laboratory, Inc. for the Central Avenue payment testing in the amount of $8,200.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yes.
Anybody opposed? Okay, the motion is carried.
Then I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to a contract between the village of Roselle and Mr. Natural Janitorial Services, Inc. for the janitorial and cleaning services.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion is carried.
And that is it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Brookshire. Mr. Trejo, we have nothing under finance for you this evening. Under administration, Mr. Don.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the Administration Department, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving and amend fireworks display contract between the village of Roselle and Melrose Pyronetics Incorporated dated February 24th, 2020.
Second.
Okay, and just, Jeff, you want to just.
Couple of comments there, Andy. As you know, with the governor's Restore Illinois plan that eliminates gatherings of more than 50 people until phase five, which is really a vaccine or a treatment, that pretty much makes our summer events, both the July 3rd and the Taste of Roselle, canceled. So I work closely with Mission Church for July 3rd, the Lions Club in the Chamber for the Taste of Roselle. Both presidents would like to have a collaborative statement from the mayor and their presidents regarding the cancellation of those events. We could do that this week. This basically would be a contract amendment that would allow us to use the cancellation fee of 50% of 27.5 towards a down payment for next year's 2021 July 3rd party in the park. And Mission Church, again, is very excited to participate next year.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Wayne's got a question.
Question. I apologize.
I'm glad. Jeff, so I take it there's, there's no money lost from the village on this and Melrose Pyrotechnics is basically allowing us to use our deposit for next year. Is that correct?
It's correct. Well, we budgeted 27.5. We'll have half of that in our budget, not expended. We'll also save money. Trustee Trejo asked me, what other expenses do we incur?
The overtime and all that, yeah.
Equipment, but also from an overtime perspective for all three departments, that's about $5,000. So that will not be expended this year.
So that's a very good Melrose Pyrotechnics teamwork with us that they're willing to work with us and, and stay with us and not charge us the 50% fee for the cancellation, which is a wonderful thing, right?
That's correct.
And I wanted to ask Jim if the mayor would allow me to, in behalf of these cancellations of programs, when the state has different levels of restrictions, which are basically kind of causing us to look at these events, is there any kind of liability for organizations, not just villages, but businesses? If they open ahead of the curve or ahead of the CDC guidance or ahead of the state guidance and people get sick, do you see as a lawyer, a, a large amount of legality when this happens?
We don't know the answer to that question at this point, Wayne, other than to say, the arguments will be made if that happens, that there is liability for people not following the governor's order. It's unclear at this point as to whether a person could go forward and actually prove a case in that circumstance. They could file the litigation. It'll depend how much proof they can have that the actual early opening caused the contraction of the illness. It's a major factor in these kinds of things, but there is potential liability exposure there.
Thank you.
Hey, everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, and our motion is carried.
Okay, I would also like to make a motion to receive an update on the Village Surface Transportation Program funding for the Rothenburg Road Improvement Project.
Second.
Mr. O'Dell? This is just a concurrence for the village board. You've already reviewed our Surface Transportation Program grant application to DuPage Mayor's and Managers. As you also know, of the 44 applications that came from municipalities and other eligible organizations, the village's application was rated number one. So that's a very good thing for our staff, what they did. What that means now is that the DuPage Mayor's and Managers Board of Directors will have to approve that plan, of which I'm a part of that board. So they obviously want to know, is the municipality all in? I think a couple of things here. Number one, this is Surface Transportation Program funding, which is usually the village is paying 25% on the dollar. So that's very, very good. Number two, most municipalities were just made up by IDOT of grant funding that may be eligible as a part of some bonding in the Rebuild Illinois program that was passed last year. We're all trying to get our arms around that eligibility for funding. But if, as designated in the letter that we received from IDOT, that would pretty much cover this, this, this project. So this would just be concurrence by the board of what you directed earlier. This will get us in the timeline probably for 2021 would be engineering. 2022 would be bidding and 2023 would be construction.
David?
So Jeff, we wouldn't incur any costs during this year. If anything, the first time we would have to do any expenditure speed 2021, correct?
It's correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just have...
It's Andy. I'm sorry?
They just have concurrence from the board.
I was just asking for direction.
Okay, sorry.
No problem. Everybody in favor?
Yeah.
Anybody opposed?
Thank you.
All right, and then I would also like to make a motion to review a staff update for its COVID-19 Budget Response Plan and provide additional direction on several next steps, so.
I'll second. Jeff?
If I can do that, and I'll try to be as brief as possible, because we did some heavy lifting our last meeting. Jason really did a nice job pulling together a PowerPoint that we may be able to use too for the community moving forward. A couple of things, obviously, we had a five-phased approach to dealing with the pandemic. The first three, obviously, what staff is working on, and that's continuing to see if federal state reimbursement is there, deferring capital projects, other operational items, and then implementing a hiring freeze. I think most important, if you care to act, provided funding for states and that those counties and municipalities, over 500,000 people. There's four or five of those counties in the state, and there's one municipality in the state. DuPage County has received their share of $162 million. So I'm working as my, as a member of DuPage Mayors and Managers on your behalf to continue to work with the county to see how and what could be dispersed back to the municipalities as part of that CARES Act. As you know, that CARES Act was not about revenue reimbursement, but more about expenditures related to COVID. So we, as a staff, have been pulling together expenditures so that we can itemize that and be prepared to send that to the county. It remains to be seen what the state's going to do with their allotment and whether or not that's going to come back to the village. The Treasury guidance has pretty much been universal, and that money can only be used for expenditure relief. Hopefully, the federal government, or maybe not, will look at a stimulus for package with, which would look at revenue reimbursement. So I think out of, that's the biggest thing I wanted to tell you. We continue to work on that. That second page was more about drilling down a little bit farther into some of the things we're doing as a result of the COVID. I wanted to reiterate then that reduce revenue, it's still too early to kind of see where things are going. Because of the lag in the reporting of sales tax and income tax, you won't know until June and July what sort of impact that will have on us. Property tax, the recent decision by the DuPage County Board to allow for deferral of that first property installment due on June 1st till September could create some cash flow issues. Obviously, there's certain amount of those property installments that are escrowed, but those that aren't, people take advantage of that program if eligible. Going on to reduce spending, I think we, as a staff, have fine-tuned what we presented before. We've identified probably 300 grand, $300,000 in general operating fund expenditures related to conferences, traveling, public relations, special events, small equipment, and certain things that will help offset any sort of revenue reduction. We've also continued to hold on our five full-time vacant positions. And what the board directed me to do at our last meeting was to find out regarding a deferral of our street improvement program and our water main replacement program. And if we don't have to make a decision on that now, we shouldn't. And to compare with the board, I followed up with both of those contractors through Karen, our Director of Public Works. And we are on hold for both of those with regards to the bond responsibility. If the program gets canceled for the street program, we will not be responsible for paying that back. So that's a good thing. For the water main, they'll continue to hold our prices. So I would envision, though, at our June meeting, having to make a call one way or another on those two large programs. And then obviously, the cancellation of the events we spoke about earlier. Service delivery, I think you all know our public safety, how, how they respond with PPE. Things are different. Public Works is working, the way they work now is more in a pod system. So Karen has combined our divisions and created little pods to keep separation amongst all employees and where they locate from. And I think Village Hall, we're still working home. Most of our staff is at home, working remotely. Obviously, technology has been our greatest asset during this time, not only for our employees, but for our public. And I think the building permit example of contractors and homeowners using technology and our online system has been very helpful to continuing that operation. Recovery and reopening, as you may or may not know, we have been working with our counterparts and as a staff of when, if and when the Village Hall and our other municipal buildings would open. Certainly, there's a lot to be working through with policies and procedures and protection of our employees and protection of our customers. But I do, one thing I do want to ask the board next here is with regard to vehicle stickers. As you know, we passed an executive order and the board ratified the delay of certain business license, liquor license, and vehicle sticker payments. And we've done that with business licenses and liquor license, pushing them out. But vehicle stickers, we pushed it out two months, obviously because we're closed. And believe it or not, people still utilize the Village Hall to make payments for their vehicle stickers. I would recommend, in talking with Jason and Tom, because we still don't know if and when the Village Hall will open, that we push that out further to make a deadline date of September 30th. So in essence, our application period would be August 1st through September 30th. And I think I even had a conversation with all of you, and even David, perhaps recasting our, our year that we use for vehicle stickers. We still get the same amount of cash flow, but instead of having that May, June 1st through May 30th period, why don't we move from a October 1st through September 30th period? So I would ask the board to consider that recommendation, not only for providing some deferral and some relief for residents to have to pay, but also just our inability to decide when, if and when our Village Hall will open and how we'll be able to administer that. And one last thing, with regards to opening the Village Hall, we are still going to have people working at home. So we may have half of our staff in, half of our staff gone. And the administration of opening up those vehicle sticker applications takes people to be here. So for all those reasons, I would hope you would consider a staff recommendation to have Andy do another executive order, which would push the deadline date out two more months.
I'm good with it.
I'm fine with it.
I agree. Okay, thank you.
Clarification, is that just vehicle stickers?
Just vehicle stickers. So we would draft up an executive order for Andy, which you would all review. He would do that, and then he would ratify that at our May 26th meeting.
And Jeff, one point of clarification, we would then be on that cycle for the future, correct? So people aren't getting hit with a bill in September and then being hit again in May right away?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And then all of those people that have already paid, they'll, they'll just continue all the way through to October of next year, then?
I don't think we've had many people pay, Bruce. I'm not sure of the number yet. We haven't sent applications out. We've had a couple people say, when are, when are you going to send out my application? But as a whole, the applications have not been sent out yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then I think finally, the next steps, I just, I've talked with all of you individually. I don't know if there's an appetite to have staff review programs, assisting businesses and residents. We've been, done a very good job at deferring the timing of that. But if there is, certainly staff is open to doing a little bit more research on that. And with that, I'm done, Andy.
All right, Jeff. Anybody's feelings on that? Yeah, Wayne?
Yeah, I think it's incumbent on us that if we see an article somewhere, we can forward it to you about what other villages are doing. And, you know, then we can decide if we're capable of doing the same thing or not. And I also wanted to just say rather quickly that this is a real good document that we just looked at here, this PowerPoint. This could be used for, for businesses that I've been associated with. I think, Jay, this is really a good job. You've hit every bullet point that any company would ever worry about, whether on the revenue or the expense side. I think it's a good document.
Anybody else? David?
So I agree with Wayne that we need to figure out a way to help the community. I think we've already have a good idea of what other communities are doing. I think financially, these are places that have a lot more revenue than we have. So I would be curious to see, how can we leverage our resources and our knowledge of federal and state programs to kind of help connect people to the right resources and programs that are out there? I know for some small business owners, that might be a really daunting task if they're not familiar with that. So I wonder, in that aid component, how can we be a matchmaker, so to speak, to help connect them to existing aid programs? Because I would love to help everyone. I'm just very concerned about, I mean, we aren't Elk Grove Village. We don't have millions of dollars we can throw at this. So I'd much rather flex in that direction.
And I would agree with you 100%, David. Brian has been reaching out to a lot of our businesses. I have gotten several, several compliments on how often he is staying in touch with them, what he is doing for them, the directions that he is pointing them in, and the help and guidance he is giving them. So I want to make sure everybody was aware of that. Anything else?
So, yeah, Andy, I guess I'm also, when I'm reading that and looking at the numbers, I was very concerned about the amount of money that various villages are putting out there. And I wholeheartedly concur with David in the fact that we just don't have that kind of capital to be able to do that. But his idea of dealing with the resources is, is a, is a great one. I wanted to say that I'm, I'm struggling on the, and on the whole business license piece, mainly because there are businesses that are, I mean, I, they're, they're functioning. Don't get me wrong, I know they're not, they're not doing what they should be, you know? They would love to be bringing in the revenue, but yet some of them are still functioning. And others could potentially function if, if, you know, we weren't in the situation where we are and they can consider some level of social distancing and the like, and who knows what's going to happen. So I just wanted to be, when we talked about business licenses and deferrals or whatever we may come up with, I'm struggling with that one because of how some people are still able to operate to some capacity.
And Bruce, I have to be, I have to agree with you 100%. And be very, very mindful, we don't know the ramifications of what's going to go on as of yet. So going into this, being cautious, I would, I would definitely preach. I've been talking to staff about that. And I think we continue to be cautious on what we're doing and how we're doing it, as we always have been. Okay?
Well, David and me, David and I, David first.
Go ahead, David.
Sure. One thing that I would just, in talking about this more, I think the only thing that I would start to think about a little bit, I mean, the economic piece of this is the most important thing, without a doubt, but I think there's going to be a morale issue. And we have a lot of things out of our control, but I'd be curious at some point, what can we do that would be responsible to kind of help put some of the spirit or some of the things that people come to town for? You know, is it the Fire Department doing a drive-by and just, you know, sirens all ablaze to, you know, have some fun with the kids? I don't know what that looks like, but I think at some point, we might want to look at, you know, summer's coming up, how do we keep people still engaged and not as frustrated as they could be?
Wayne?
Just real quick, I wanted to make sure that I made my statement right. Everything would be predicated on what we could afford to do. So I agree with Bruce and David, you know, I'm not saying we can afford to do what Elk Grove Village can do. But looking it over, we have to see what we could do, and if we can't do it, we can't do it. That's okay. We always live within our means, don't we?
We're there. Okay.
Thank you, Andy.
Moving on to other business for discussion. Anybody? Executive session?
So how do we do that?
We were going to adjourn this meeting first, since we didn't have any business coming back. Is that how we decided?
In actuality, you make the motion to go into the executive session. I, Patty, let me ask you a question. Is there still possible action on the personnel item of appointment of a fire chief?
No.
There is not, okay?
So we can adjourn our regular meeting and that...
After you make the motion to go into executive session, because you have to be in a, to go into executive session. The motion go into executive session.
I'll make the motion to go to executive session.
Thank you, Lee. Second?
Yeah, I'll second it. Okay, I need a roll call, please, Madam?
Wait a second, Mayor. The purpose of the executive session is to discuss personnel. I'm going to be a fire chief. Collective bargaining agreement with the Firefighters Association Local 41, IAFF, and collective bargaining with the Metropolitan Alliance of Police, Chapter 258. No final action is anticipated. Thank you.
Trustee Trejo.
Hi.
Trustee Domke.
Hi.
Trustee Berkshire.
Yes.
Trustee Poleski.
Hi.
And Trustee Debit.
Hi.
Okay.
I need a motion to adjourn from our regular board meeting then.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yes.
See you in the other Zoom meeting.
So now we leave this one, and we go to the other one.
Yes, sir.